I started to say before we started. This invocation, you don't have to participate if you don't want to. Whatever reason you came here tonight will not be affected by whether you participate or you don't. And everybody is welcome to bring someone to give the invitation. Just call my office and they'll arrange it. And Reverend Ryan Powell, Debbie Montgomery has had some surgery last week, been unable to be with us tonight, but I would ask that you remember our Councilman Debbie.
Okay, sure thing.
As a woman, Debbie.
That's great.
Father God, we thank you for another day of life. You bless us with, God, the opportunity that most of us have had to go to our jobs and tend to our responsibilities, Lord, it truly is a blessing. And God, we thank you for the opportunity. God, we pray to be with Councilwoman Debbie this evening, Lord, as today she's had some business with surgery. I pray in Jesus' name that your healing hand be upon her and she'll be back to full strength to her job, her activities, and her service to this community again very, very soon. God, we thank you for this community. We thank you for all the wonderful things that it is to us, Lord, and means to us, God. I pray that you'll be with our community as we discuss these financial struggles we're in as well, Lord, as the opportunity to bring jobs to this community and just see the growth and the blessing and growth of this community, Lord. I appreciate these men and women as they make decisions, give them wisdom, give them knowledge, Lord, and may we seek to do your will and be united for the good of this community and for those who are part of this community. God, we love you and thank you for this time. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Ask everybody in the chair if they're still on. Sure, we got them on. Live range or? What is it? Rule call, be the first item.
Councilwoman Rish.
Present.
Councilwoman Weber.
Present.
Councilwoman Schomel.
Present.
Councilwoman Nobby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Councilwoman Creach.
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Let the record show that we have five council people present. We have a forum and a business. With that, we'll have a reading of the minutes of February 17th, 2014 meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Have we make a motion? We pass those minutes presented.
Second.
A motion and a second to consider the minutes as they were presented. Are there any additions or corrections? None appearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Welcome everybody here tonight. I don't know if I have a very big crowd, but it's a rainy night, so it looks like a female. The next A, B, C, and D, all resolutions taking money back into the city. Seventy-six, ten reimbursement from cable TV. Seven thousand, fifty-seven, forty-five reimbursement from interelectricity and water. Reimbursement into from stance, eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-eight fifty, insurance claim, and five hundred and fifty dollars in from telephone and police. If it's okay with you, we'll take all four of those resolutions together, twenty-fourteen, oh eight, oh nine, ten, and eleven.
Summate.
Second.
Motion in a second to take all four resolutions at one time. Any discussion? Any at all? None appearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Pending ordinance thirty-one oh six. This is a stormwater user fees ordinance. This will be a public hearing. Everybody knows what the ordinance says. We're phasing in the stormwater fees for people that create a three-hundred jobs, a hundred and fifty jobs, and a hundred jobs. And it was read last time. Is there any discussion? Any at all? Any discussion whatsoever? None appearing. I'll close the public hearing. Turn it over to the council. If you approve this tonight, this will be the third and final reading.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept pending ordinance thirty-one oh six.
Second. Need your second?
I second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance thirty-one oh six, stormwater user fees. We introduced it last week. We voted on first reading. We had a public hearing tonight, and now we have a motion before us to adopt it on third and final reading. Any discussion?
It's a good economic development tool, and I'm happy to see that it's up for the third reading.
No discussion? I have a rule call vote.
Councilwoman Rish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Weber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schomel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nobby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Creach.
Yes.
Ninety-five oh, adopting the ordinance passes, and it is in effect. Pending ordinance thirty-one oh nine. This is an approval to a staff fee, three dollars and fifty cents per roll for recycled bags. We found we were paying between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars a year for recycled bags and furnishing them, and we found them in many different places they shouldn't be. And Board of Works thought it was a good idea that if people recycle, if you pay three dollars and fifty cents for fifty bags, you were getting a heck of a deal. And we thought people would make better use of them, and in our tight budget, it would take fifteen or twenty thousand dollars out of the general fund to pay for bags. I'm open for discussion on the pending ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If this is approved, when does this going to affect?
Immediately.
Because that means if someone comes at the street department tomorrow, they'll pay then?
The only time you have to wait over is if it's a penalty, if there's a penalty connected with something, then you have to wait over for two weeks.
Okay.
There is no penalty connected with this.
Okay. My one question. Thank you.
I've had some calls favor and some calls against, which that's what you always have. One person called me, lived outside the city. And right, because they had their bags, and we're supposed to get them free anyway.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
At the transfer station where we have county and city recycling, we have a thirty-yard container that sits the bottom of the hill, which is for county residents. Probably half to three-quarters of the bags say city companies don't want. So I think what happens, maybe parents give the bags to their children or vice versa. But yeah, you're right, that's what happens.
I couldn't find any other cities that were furnished to bags free. I'm sure there are some, someplace. Most cities have containers where you go take your recycling, too. And we may have to go to that if the manpower is such that we can't pick it up. I'm open for discussion on pending ordinance thirty-one oh six, or excuse me, thirty-one oh nine. A pure rule to establish trash bag fees.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to adopt it?
Yes.
For a second.
A second.
A motion and a second to adopt pending ordinance thirty-one oh nine, establishing three dollars and fifty cents per roll to buy bags. That would be fifty bags. I don't know what that comes out to. Anybody wants it? How much a bag?
Seven cents.
Seven cents? That's pretty cheap. Any further discussion?
Can we still use them for blinds?
No.
Is that only for city residents still? We're still only going to furnish them for city residents, just to be clear. It's not, and not everybody can come in.
It's a city.
And the only place that are available is at the street department.
Yep. Rule call vote.
Councilwoman Weber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schomel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nobby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Creach.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish.
Yes.
You have passed it on first reading. If you'd like to suspend the rules and consider it on third reading.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion in a second to consider pending ordinance thirty-one oh nine on third reading. On suspension of rules only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. You may go to third reading if you like.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. We consider pending ordinance thirty-one oh nine to establish fees for recycled bags at three dollars and fifty cents a per roll for city people. We got a motion in a second. Another rule call vote. That's your floor discussion.
How much again was it saving per year?
Fifteen, twenty dollars a year.
We budgeted fifteen thousand for recycled bags, yes.
Okay.
Rule call vote.
Councilwoman Schomel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nobby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Creach.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Weber.
Yes.
You have passed that on third and final reading. That goes into effect tomorrow. Mr. Job. She bombed it over there.
Yes.
Pending ordinance thirty-one ten, ordinance, this is approval for a quick claim deed for the Little Firehouse to Historic Connersville. They asked us a couple of months ago if they could take it. They have a ninety-year lease on it, and they were willing to take it and make it part of Historic Connersville and maintain it, which I think they have been maintaining it for a long time. And Board of Works approved it, and you said into the head, so we have the quick claim deed ready tonight. Discussion.
Yeah, I got a question here. I believe this is the same type of deed that we have for the property for the railroad track on the north end of town. Is that right, John?
You mean a quick claim deed?
Yeah, it's the same type of deed, right?
Perhaps.
But we're having some issues figuring out whether or not that was sufficient to take ownership and, or to do that. Is this going to be enough for them to do what they need to?
Sure. Yeah, it transfers ownership. It just doesn't warrant title. That's the difference between a quick claim deed and a warranty deed.
So then, does the same apply then for the land up on the north end of town?
If it's a quick claim deed, right, it doesn't warrant title.
But that means there could be some liens against it. There could be holdings against it.
Or theoretically, you don't even own it. You know, it's the...
So should we take this as a...
It only transfers whatever ownership the...
We would have to do a bunch of research, bring the abstract up to date. It's not worth it. A quick claim deed is sufficient. Nobody else is going to want it here. Won't you believe, John, a quick claim deed is sufficient on this little piece of property?
Yeah, we don't want to get into title insurance and all that.
That would cost us a lot of money. Any further questions? Are you ready for the question? Do I have a motion?
No.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept pending ordinance thirty-one ten.
A second.
Motion and a second to accept pending ordinance thirty-one ten, approval of a quick claim deed on the Little Firehouse to Historic Connersville. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to suspend the rules?
Don't move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance thirty-one ten to make a quick claim deed to Historic Connersville on the Little Firehouse on Sixth Street?
Seventh.
Seventh Street. On suspension of rules only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we can move forward.
Move, pass that on third reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance thirty-one ten on third and final reading, a quick claim deed on the Little Historic Firehouse on Seventh Street to Historic Connersville. We'll have a rule call vote.
Councilwoman Nobby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Creach.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Weber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schomel.
Yes.
Five to zero, and you have done that on third and final reading. It's not a deal. We have pending ordinance sixty-one, excuse me, thirty-one eleven. This is for the Redevelopment Commission. This is two thousand dollars. We're going to have a public hearing. How this works, the Redevelopment Commission receives the rent off the Fifth Third Building. It goes into the general fund, and it has to be appropriated out to pay bills over there. This is an appropriation for two thousand dollars to pay bills.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Yes.
I hate to correct you, but it doesn't go in the general fund.
I knew that when I said it.
It goes in the Redevelopment Commission fund. But we don't have money appropriated out of that fund to pay anything. So as things come up, then we have to appropriate the money.
I knew better. I knew when I said it, I was wrong. It's the same deal, though. We get the rent, and we have to put there. This is two thousand dollars.
How's it coming on the sale of that building?
It is moving. John, where are we on sale of the building?
Well, let's see. I talked to the buyer that made the offer to purchase Friday, and he's in the process now of doing his inspections. So he has to get through with that before the deal goes through.
The best thing about that building is we retain the studio upstairs, we retain the hundred jobs downstairs, and it is paying its own way. But we don't want to own it, but that's up to the Redevelopment Commission, which is in arm of the city. I am. I have to open a public hearing. Any discussion on the additional appropriation from the Redevelopment Fund to pay bills? Any discussion at all? Everybody understand what's happening? Any discussion out there? Anybody? None appearing. All opposed. Public hearing. Council, it's in your hands.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to accept pending ordinance thirty-one eleven.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance thirty-one eleven on first reading. This was an additional appropriation of two thousand dollars to pay bills at the old Fifth Third Bank through the Redevelopment Commission. Rule call vote.
Councilwoman Creach.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Weber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schomel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nobby.
Yes.
You have passed that on first reading. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance thirty-one eleven on third and final reading?
Summate.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to suspend the rules on pending ordinance thirty-one eleven. On suspension of rules only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? I didn't hear the rest of you ays.
I meant ayes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's a little better. Any opposed? Motion carried. You can go to third reading if you like.
Don't move.
Got a motion and a second. Do I have a second? The eyes are filled tonight.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance thirty-one eleven on third and final reading. This is putting two thousand dollars in the Redevelopment Fund so we can pay the bills. Any further discussion? I'm open for vote.
Councilwoman Rish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Weber.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schomel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nobby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Creach.
Yes.
Okay. On this aye, you know, I said there would be no additional appropriations during this hard times with money, and we're not going to spend any money unless just absolutely have to. We have the opportunity now, we have to go for bulletproof vests. We usually go for five each year. We have to pay fifty percent of the match. Today Julie and I went over our money in the Riverboat Fund. We have enough money in Riverboat. If we would get this grant, we could match that grant. It would be about fourteen hundred dollars. So I am going to allow that as a, if you pass it, as an additional appropriation. We've got over everything we need to pay on a Riverboat, and we've got it figured. We're okay.
Does that include the additional preparations for the match for the ambulance and all the fires we talked about?
Yep. Because half of that match for the ambulance would come from the government.
Dave, how much in five of these?
Well, I haven't got a quote yet.
Diana said today that they run about eight hundred and sixty dollars apiece. So it's below four thousand dollars.
It's something like that.
So half would be like two thousand, twenty-three hundred.
But Dave, my thing is, and I'm, this is, this is great. We have to have this, I understand. Does all the police officers wear vests?
They're supposed to. Most of them do. I got only two officers that aren't wearing vests because they got medical release from wearing them for medical reasons.
Okay, okay.
But yeah, the rest of them are wearing it.
That's my thing. I mean, it's a safety issue. It's like...
It's in our rules and regulations, mandatory. And before, it was always in there. Then it's been the rules and regulations. It was kind of vague if you had to wear them or not. We modified that in the mid-two thousands to where it's mandatory where. And in the past, well, this year, at the end of the year, I passed where we're going to abide by this rule. It got to the point where we like to pick and choose. Everybody should be wearing it. Like I said, only two officers are not wearing it because of medical reasons.
What would the medical reasons be?
Pardon?
What would the medical reasons be?
I can't, I can't disclose it. It's medical condition that two officers have that...
As long as the doctor signs a slip.
Yeah, it's cool. I just wonder what it was. It's, they're uncomfortable.
And you know, Dave, I understand, and I guess my thing is, heaven forbid, if a police officer were to get...
John, I guess that'd be true.
Didn't have the vest on. I guess, I mean, you see what I'm saying? Then did we do, did we do our job and make sure they wore the equipment? Be like with the firefighters with the building, with the turnout.
Like I said, it's a requirement. They're supposed to be wearing their vests. And I look around at my officers tonight, and the ones working tonight, all of them are wearing except one of them.
Okay.
And I'm sticking by that. I'm enforcing it. Probably where I was a little lax before in the last past several years, but I admit my, especially what's happened up in Indianapolis here in the last couple of years, that's more pain and certainly shot. So, and nationally, there's more officers shot and killed. There's a shot in smaller towns than in bigger cities. So, yes, it's been enforced, and I'm making sure they wear it.
Okay.
I asked David today to also get a disclaimer for each one of the officers to us that he or she chooses not to wear.
Yeah, he chooses not to.
So that we can have it in their file, so we kind of protect ourselves. There's a doctor slip in there, plus they don't want to wear it.
And I talked to John about getting an updated one, and we're working on that.
Yeah, I'm going to work on a whole harmless agreement, indemnification agreement.
We want that in each officer's file.
What would this put us as far as the condition of vests?
We'll still need eleven, or excuse me, scratch that, fifteen. We're down that many. Because we have, we have eleven already issued out, and then fifteen would bring us up. I scratched that fourteen, because I'm counting myself, because I retire next year.
What's the average age of them? How long can you use them?
They're usually five for five to seven years.
Are these made per, for each individual size?
Yes, they have to be measured and cut for them. If another guy, possibly your size, could probably wear it, yes. But, but yeah, but they get the vests that are measured and cut for that person.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Now, this would be only if we'd get the grant, and we can't apply for the grant unless we have the match up front. So I'm asking you tonight to consider this fifty percent match.
You want a motion?
Yeah, I need a motion. I got to give this a hand.
Well, make a motion. If we, if a grant's available, we will have the fifty percent match for three or four vests for the police department.
I know it won't be any more than two thousand. She told me today it would probably be more, like fourteen hundred, because we don't always get what we ask for. Okay. We have a motion and a, is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We have pending ordinance thirty-one twelve. This ordinance is, in the past, the utility has been paid thirty, or excuse me, five percent to collect the trash bills for us. We're reducing that to one percent. We think one percent will cover their costs to add that to their bill, and the four percent will come back to the city's general fund. All these things that we're doing tonight are just little things that we can find additional streams of money, and we think that's the thing to do. I'll open it up to you. We've got this ordinance before you. Does everybody understand it?
Is it open for council or for the general fund?
It's, anybody that wants to discuss it at this point, it's open for discussion.
I would like to say, I would like to see the council pass this. This would put approximately twenty-nine thousand dollars back in the general fund if we pass this. That's all I have.
Any further discussion? Anybody out there have any discussion?
What?
It was Tom's idea from last meeting.
The utilities, they, there's a fee that always has been when they collect, because they collect the trash fee, so they received a fee for collecting that, a certain percent of the collections. So we're just reducing what that fee has been.
Used to be five percent. We're taking it to one. It didn't get on yours because I didn't get it on Thursday to send out to the, we didn't get the ordinance until, what, today, probably?
Well, we didn't have it until today because we had a resolution with the Board of Works and thought that was probably sufficient. But I think there was some indication that you wanted one for the city council.
Whenever you're handling money, expand if you have an ordinance for it.
This afternoon.
Question?
When will that take effect?
When will this take effect? It'll take effect the first of the month with the next collection of trash.
It's no more, it's no more fee or charge to the customer. No. It's just a sorting of the money where it goes.
We are looking in every corner to find money for the general fund. And when we look at these things, these are things that we can do. Sure, it don't sound like much, but just tonight, we've added several thousand dollars to the general fund.
What is the balance? Do you have a balance?
Yes, I do. Well, I have one effective...
Balance of the general fund tonight?
Tonight, well, this was, he ran this on April third, so it's Friday, was seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-two cents, which I told Board of Works today is actually a little better than I'd hoped it was going to be at this point in time. Our claims have been down the last two times.
If you'd have seen the Board of Works claims today, we were down, way down.
We only have about sixty-five thousand dollars worth of claims, and it'd been three weeks since we paid out, which should be good.
Uh, before I'm out the riverboat, do you have a balance for the riverboat?
Riverboat right now has a hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Part of that is appropriated, committed already, um, about twenty thousand.
We're going to try to make the trash truck payment in the fall.
We'd like to do that. We haven't appropriated any money for the trash truck yet. We should get another riverboat check. Uh, usually get those in the first part of August. Last year it was seventy-nine thousand dollars, which is down from what it's been. So I'm kind of estimating maybe seventy thousand.
And what's the trash truck pay?
Uh, ninety-two something.
And that's due when?
You're asking a lot of questions tonight, Scott. It's in November. Is that close enough?
We've got some other things that's been appropriated out of there. The tin building up at the park that's been appropriated out of the riverboat fund. The building on Eighth Street to be tore down, which I've got on hold, was appropriated out of there. There's a couple of little things that were appropriated out of there that we're just holding on. We're not going to spend it. These vests, if this grant went through, uh, the payment on the ambulance, um, but we figured, we looked at...
Not the payment on the ambulance, if we got a grant for the ambulance.
We, we figured that we would have enough money to pay all these things and be able to guarantee that we pay for those, those vests using that. And we're really suffering right now. The street sweeper is in shambles. And we weren't able to get it back together. It's got a Renault engine in it. We can't find one. We may have to rent one. As you know, there's sand and gravel all over every street in town. That's very dangerous when they come to stops and motorcycles are very dangerous when they turn corners. So I don't know what we're gonna do there yet. We may have to rent a street sweeper for a couple of months. Or the guys might just get out and sweep streets with rooms. I don't know what we're gonna do. But, uh, we're kind of holding that fund for equipment. That's what the ordinance calls us to use it for. We certainly couldn't buy a street sweeper. We'd have to rent one. Where were we? Okay, uh, back to the, uh, board. You changed that from five to one? Oh, is it done?
We haven't done it.
We haven't done it. We've got to talk here. Did anyone make a motion?
Some of them.
Some of them. All right, second?
Second.
A motion and a second to pass pending ordinance thirty-one twelve, changing the fee for collecting trash from five percent to one percent that we would pay the utility. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final reading?
Some of them moved.
On suspension only on pending ordinance thirty-one twelve, suspension rules only. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We'll go to the third reading if you like.
Some motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to go to third reading on pending ordinance thirty-one twelve, which would reduce the trash bag fee from five percent to one percent that we pay the utility for collecting it for us. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Old business. At the Board of Works today, they asked about the ball field. We fought that ball field. You know, we had it pretty well fixed up and then flooded again this Saturday. We'll start fixing it up again as soon as it gets dry. I told the committee that we would not spend any money on appraisals. So they're out trying to find somebody that would appraise it free. I don't know if they're gonna find anybody, but that's what they're doing. Anybody in a hearing distance that wants to appraise them, ground free, they can do it. There are some people out in the community raising some money. Any other old business that you can think about? Okay. Um, miscellaneous business. Tom?
Um, good, thank you.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Hey, Fran?
Uh, did we want to talk about retirees insurance? Uh, we brought it up at the Board of Works meeting today and, uh, talked about some retirees paying one dollar a year for insurance that's costing twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and some that are paying five percent. If we ask the people to pay ten percent like full-time employees are paying, that would bring in about forty-six thousand dollars per year. Uh, you have a plan that you've given out trying to raise funds. That, that's my plan and I was wondering if any of your colleagues on the council have any plans where they think we could save, save some money.
Fran's counsel was good at the Board of Works. What he's saying, he thinks that active employees are really being cheated because they're forced to pay ten percent on their insurance and retired employees pay a dollar and some pay five percent. Uh, he kind of would like to discuss everybody paying ten percent across the board, which would break forty-six thousand dollars better into the general fund. Uh, there are some people that think that this was a promise when you retire. This is what you get. You shouldn't change it. Um, as we all know, this deontic, a notion to change their insurance and just sit there. We're not giving anything now. There's two sides to the story and two stories to every side. Discussion, Mr. Creach? Do you have any opinion?
Well, what Fran said, I, I understand this. Councils made promises. Now, first of all, you people out there watching TV, when they say retiree insurance, this is not for people over sixty-five. This is for police and firemen that had to be fifty-two years of age and they decided to retire. The city would, would pick up his health insurance till they're sixty-five. On the other side of that, you had councils that made promises to these individuals. Uh, councils made promises when we had eleven thousand manufacturing jobs and we don't have those now. But still, you, you did make those promises. I, I don't know. I was going to ask, I thought, well, there's no sense starting a war, but I was going to ask, uh, during this meeting, the last couple of days in, in the newspaper, there's been articles regarding the city, all the city employees. I was going to ask if the executive staff had a plan because we know we can't, we can't go on the way we're going on. Uh, it's a tough call and I can see both sides. Uh, how much money do we have? And then again, you made promises to these people and some took early retirement because of that. What's the answer? I don't know. I do know if we don't have money, we can't pay.
That would bring the retirees' insurance down from six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars a year to five hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Is, is present time, is it around six hundred and twenty-nine thousand for retirees?
Six twenty-one.
Six twenty-one.
To what? More than?
Early retirees' insurance.
For retirees only.
What'd it bring it down to?
It would bring to five hundred and seventy-five thousand. Tom, one little correction. Some, some retirees retired in their forties. They do not have to pay fifty-two.
Okay. I was thinking it, it changed.
It was changed, but there were some that...
Okay. They took advantage of that opportunity. Okay.
Do we know how many people this affects?
Uh, yes, it would, um, in the five percent range we give, it would affect fifteen people and in the one dollar a year range, it would be fourteen.
Twenty in total.
The Board of Works agreed to look into it.
Mm-hmm.
They thought it was something that, uh, would help in this financial problem.
Mm-hmm.
We actually pay more for retirees' ins, retirees' insurance than we do for any active group. And I think when you get an older group of employees, it gets like that. It's lockstep. But remember, we only pay it till sixty-five and then when they go on Medicare, it stops.
And I think their spouses may carry on.
It's a family plan.
Yes, until they're sixty-five, the spouses are in the insurance on the single plan, yes.
Okay.
Mayor, I think I need to point out, as I did at the Board of Works meeting, that, that any change in this would have to be negotiated because it is contractual. Uh, with, with the one exception that I explained to the Board of Works, uh, if in fact a financial emergency warranted additional funding, which we don't know what status of that will be until June.
I believe, Your Honor, you've been advised by some of the financial people that, uh, the cuts so far may not be enough.
Yeah, but you're right. They've been telling me that we haven't made deep enough cuts. But Julie and I closed the door on the closet and we've got our heads together and we still think we can look at it in June and we'll be able to tell for sure where we are.
I never said for sure. I just think there are too many variables. I, I'm not gonna get locked into that. We don't know what our expenses will be for sure. We don't know what our tax draws are gonna be for sure. There's just...
But we'll have a clearer picture.
We'll have a better idea of that.
Are there other areas where this is a similar situation?
Other towns?
No, 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 with the retiree, uh, insurance.
Well, when you look at this thing and you try to find ways to find money, you can look at it and you can look at it and you look at it. I said all that stuff to you and you looked at it. I've had it with you since Thursday or Friday.
No, I, I mean, are there other departments?
It's all people.
No.
It's all people.
There's only, uh, the utilities, which really doesn't enter into this, and the police and fire, the only ones that have health insurance. They retire early. Anybody else doesn't.
So, so then police has this as well then, right?
Police and fire.
Police and fire, yes.
So is this just fire or is it police and fire?
Police and fire.
That's both the figures that he gave you.
Utilities, you don't pay for that?
Yes, if they have twenty years, they get insurance till they're sixty-five, but we can't discuss utilities because it's...
Taxpayer money, that's rate payer.
Yes, it's not tax money. They're not tax, tax money.
They get their insurance, if they've got twenty years of service and they retire, they get it till they're sixty-five.
Do we know how much longer we'll be in that state? Like obviously people will go off every year, every couple of months, I mean, obviously. So...
But as people go off, generally speaking, somebody else is coming on.
There's retirees.
Yeah, I understand that, but...
Not for the dollar though.
No, not, that doesn't, nobody goes on for the dollar.
It's already been negotiated long ago.
Yeah.
So how many of those, how, you know, how long will it be for the people of the dollar, yeah?
Do you know that, man?
I don't know. No, I don't know how many years.
Two years ago, the fire was only costing you about twelve thousand a year and that was two years ago. I believe you had a couple of come off since then.
Probably, yeah. We had, we lost several last year at that fire.
So where are these fourteen people coming from?
I don't know if they're in the age group now where there are any time they're going off. It's just like spouses.
Yeah, but still, but when it, when it drops to a single plan though, the rate goes way down. They cost the city a lot less money when there's only one person.
So the employee has to be sixty-five?
Employee has to be. They go off when they're sixty-five and then the spouse will go off when they turn sixty-five.
Oh, wow.
Troy, did you say that only costs us twelve thou, I mean, that was how many, on the dollar plan or?
We only had five. I mean, and then we got, I think, three of them still on the spouse.
Well, he knows the difference between what they pay. I don't have a list in front of me. I have a list in the office, but I can't tell you exactly.
Oh, I'm gonna hear. What are we, what are we talking ten percent?
That's what the active employees pay ten percent of their insurance.
That's...
Every month.
A month.
Mm-hmm.
And what dollar figure is that?
What's?
Well, it's a twelve.
Two hundred and forty dollars a month.
We didn't mess with the fire and police on the dollar is because their, um, retirement is not based on cost of living like the seventy-seven and fund is. Um, the police and fire funds then do not get a raise unless the department guys get a raise. So basically, they've, they've not had a raise as long as we've had one. So when we, when we dealt with this in the last negotiations, we said, this is, this is a worst, cause they're not, we don't see them, we don't see us getting a raise in years. So we said, it's, it's a small amount of money for a group of people that's not gonna get a raise. So that's what reasoning was.
And when he talks about the twelve, he's talking about the percentage that they would pay out of that group.
The, the dollar, one dollar. During the thirty-seven fund and I believe there was a fifty-three fund, but they, they don't have cost of living on their benefits. I'm not too sure what it is really right now. Let's look for time with the old under the seventy-seven one.
Yeah, all the current, all the current guys are under seventy-seven.
David and I is one of the oldest ones, so we're, but we're still all of us are under seventy-seven. They change that later on.
But according, okay, maybe I'm confused, but according to this, there are nine from somewhere only paying a dollar, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Oh, yeah, well, okay, I'm down there. Okay. I mean, there's fourteen paying a dollar.
Yes.
And, I mean, this is an unpopular view, but I'm, that's a, they've been paying a dollar for a hell of a long time. It's a, that is one heck of a deal. I mean, they've not paid for insurance for a long, long, long time. Who does that? I mean, who in, in the private sector or in the public sector does that? I mean, paid basically zero for insurance, where you stand.
Gary, but this is what I was saying earlier. Um, and I'm not saying it's anyone's fault. Previous administrations, maybe twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago, they made promises like a lot of major companies did and everything was going good. We had eleven thousand manufacturing jobs.
I would have made the promise.
Now we've got seven hundred. And, and I'm just saying, as a city council, uh, city government, uh, we've made a lot of promises. I don't know how many we can keep.
Well, I don't think you can keep this any longer. I mean, it'd be straightforward. You can't keep this promise.
This began in the mid-nineties.
I mean, we're not near where we were. We're not even halfway where we were, you know? So, I mean, I would have kept the promise if, if everything, well, if everything would have been the same, it would probably gotten better.
Gary, this began in the mid-nineties and at that time, the city was paying around ninety-five hundred dollars a year for the premium.
And this goes up every year.
It's tripled to twenty-seven thousand.
So to ask someone to help when, when you've basically paid nothing for, now, I don't know, let's say a guy's forty-two and they're almost sixty, you know, paid nothing for fantastic insurance, I don't think is unreasonable, you know?
I think we're premature on this though. I mean, right now...
Well, yeah.
We need to, we need to wait and see what happens, um, before we make any kind of decision. Obviously, we can't because it's due to contractual things and I, I think we're engaging in a conversation that may be a little premature.
It's good for me to hear what you guys think because when June comes and we look at this, if we have to make decisions, we're, we're gonna have to make some tough decisions and we need to, I, I need to know and Julie needs to know what decisions you want made.
Well, if you read the paper for the last couple of days, I don't think it's premature. I mean, it's almost, it's not doomsday, but it's...
I have told the union employees, if they do what I'm asking them to do, I think by the end of the year, we'll be able to pay all the bills. I didn't say we'd have enough money to go back and live like we used to, but we'll have enough money to pay all the bills and avoid layoffs. Now, if that don't happen by the end of the year with what we've put in place, then we're going to have to dig into some of these things, layoffs. Uh, the girls, every time I walk through the office, say, you haven't got any choice because it's people. Most of our expenses when you run a city are people doing services and that's what we're gonna have to do. You can't shut the lights out someplace and save any money. You, you know, we can't quit using gas, make the policeman walk. That, that's not feasible. It, it, it's people. So keep watching our Ps and Qs. You see what we did tonight? We're not spending any money. We're being very careful. We're trying to charge a little bit more here and there without hitting the taxpayer. We're just trying to do it.
But let me ask you a question. If, if, and I could be dead wrong here, but it sounds, and I could, my figures could be wrong, so correct me. But if you ask the retirees for help, okay, say, hey, listen, we're not the same. And I'm rounding these numbers off, say pay five percent was about a hundred and twenty bucks. Is that correct? And you have a hundred and twenty dollars times, uh, how many other? Fourteen, you know? That comes at what? I gotta figure it out here. But I mean, that's, how much is that a year? Automatically without doing anything? It's a hundred thousand? I mean, is it? Wait, I may not have calculated.
Hundred and twenty a month times twelve months.
What?
Hundred and twenty a month times twelve months.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's asking for the retirees who, we did negotiate, well, we didn't, but they're probably did. But I mean, regret, negotiated. And now, hey, listen, we, we gave you a great deal all this time. Now we are asking for a little help back because we're doing poorly right now. I don't think it's an unreasonable request.
I'd like to see you have a committee on insurance and really research. And I came from a chief's meeting on Friday and a lot of towns do insurance a lot less than we do.
Do you know what the benefit structures, are they close to what we have, Troy?
Some of them, some of them are, some of them are.
And part of it's claims, it's, it's purely claims driven from the cost.
We have some tremendous claims.
Some of them's got some real neat ideals, like using their own clinics, stuff like that.
Well, Newcastle's doing that and I discussed that with Troy. But would our people be happy with that? I don't know. Uh, they pay so much for each employee to, uh, Henry County Hospital and then they have like a hundred and forty-two services they can use during the year. If you have a cold or what, you can go to the emergency room and it's free. You don't pay anything. And after you use up your, and I'm just saying a hundred and forty-two, it may be eighty-two, I'm not sure. I've been to these meetings and, but you have to go to Henry County Hospital. You have to use their doctor. They take care of you. After you use that money up, then your insurance kicks in. So that makes your premium on your major medical way down here. That helps. But we would have to contract with the Ant Regional Hospital. I don't know if the employees would, will do that.
Well, no, that, was that a time-consuming thing to do, Troy? I mean, start to do this now? Can we turn that over right away?
No, you would have to, you would have to negotiate with the hospital a fee.
We are, we are currently in the process of trying to get cheaper insurance quoted and Julie knows.
That's cool. That's good. I mean, that's good for you guys. But does that include the retirees that we're talking about this dollar?
It'd be across the board.
That's good.
So we are in the process.
You know, Newcastle has put a nice plan together. They, they've got some nice specialists up there, uh, orthopedic people and different ones where we don't, I don't think we have orthopedic people here.
Yeah, we do.
There we do.
Do we?
Yeah.
They come here, but I don't think they're here.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
If we go past May, are we gonna be stuck with the medical trust?
No. We don't...
Cause we don't have to have eight months. Also, we got three year on the end.
We gotta notify them the end of the year or...
I think by the, yeah, by the middle of this, late summer. I don't think we have a certain date that we have to. I'm gonna talk to Ann tomorrow on some other questions that Scott had. I'll ask her about that too.
Cause the, the one broke and he called me Friday. He has contacted, uh, the office and he said, you've gotten no phone calls back.
He called me. I just hadn't had time to call him back. But I was trying to get some answers together from IAC before I called.
Well, I always gonna want a bunch of...
Well, I know that he's gonna need a lot of information, so I wanna kind of have that in, ready to go.
That's what right there is worth looking into. I mean, instead of looking to try to get money out of some retirees that haven't had a raise in eight to ten to twelve years or fifteen years, however long, I think we would be wiser to maybe look at getting insurance at a lower cost because the amount of money we pay out on a family plan for the medical trust, it, it's a, it's a good plan, but it's, it's, it's expensive. And, uh, I think there's some alternatives out there that's worth looking into.
Didn't we do that on the last council?
What scares you is cities are moving to that medical trust. Why are they moving there? Cause it's cheaper for the city.
The limit, the limit, but look, I mean, limit, you're on the cliff too. I mean, I, it's a good, it's a good plan, but it, it's, it costs a lot of money.
I think when we joined the medical trust, we were looking at a twenty percent increase. We had a three. And there were five cities in it. What's, how many cities in it?
I don't know for sure now. I know that's one of the questions Scott asked me.
Twenty-seven, yeah. And, and so it makes me wonder why cities are moving toward it if it's such a bad deal.
Well, because it's, it was desperate. I mean, the, the rise in cost was so high and a lot of them were probably self-funded.
Funded like we were and our, our pool was so small and when it's that small.
But even that, our claims... But even that, our claims are so much, it's all based on our claims.
What do you expect? I hate to say that, but Fayette County has the worst health outcomes in the state, I mean, you know, we're ninety-first.
And that all, and that always into your insurance cost.
Absolutely.
So how do you fix it?
How do you fix it?
Exercise, trails, cultural trail, you have to, you have to expand yourself, that's how you do it. I mean, you can't, you can't live in the same way you've been twenty, twenty-five years ago.
That's what we want to forget.
But that's, that's the overall cost of your insurance, because if you get graded like that, that's where you're at, you pay higher prices.
I also believe that we could go after some, a lot more community grants that we're not getting, that would improve our health. We don't look at that, we never look at the idea of grants that would actually improve our health grade. Why not? Why don't we use the, I know the tobacco cessation program was huge, can we still look at that? Is there grant money available in order to stop smoking?
Every grant that comes to pass, my desk, I take to the grant writer, and most of the time, we're not eligible. There are so many things that.
Well, she does do some of those grants through the health department because she works for that county, too, so I know that they get quite a few through them.
And we have looked at grants, like rails to trails, but there's, issues are there.
A lot of times, it's a fifty percent match.
Well, a lot of times, too, some of our community, you know, like Walmart will do grants, Kroger will do grants, you know, they've got a feed the children program, there's a lot of other transitive, but they're small, they're not huge transitive.
I think we do more with cleaners, in the city or county, in the state again.
Because the needs are great. You know, mentioned what Gary said, talking about the idea of ten percent on the retirees. First of all, like, like James said, those people haven't had a raise in twenty years after retirement. Imagine you retired in eighty-four, or ninety-four, ninety-five, and you haven't got any raise, and now you guys are talking about putting, potentially putting ten percent.
Well, I think it's awful, I think it's awful, but we're not the same community we were back then.
I understand that, but we'd also be throwing a lot more people into even a lower level of poverty that live right here, potentially.
Well, you can look at it that way, and I, and I don't mean to be argumentative at all, I'm just looking at it another way, which is, they haven't paid for health insurance for twenty years, which is a, a huge advantage, and, and you know, I'm glad they negotiated that. But I, and again, if you guys can find better insurance, all power to it, because I mean, I don't want to change that, I'm just trying to figure out a way that I don't read it in the front page of the paper anymore, you know?
What Thompson, the, the labor person that says that on the TV, don't know why they got a dollar.
Correct, you're absolutely right about that, I mean, you can't talk about it, yeah.
Because none of you are here.
I've negotiated three contracts, I know why they got it.
Well, what they probably did was, it was probably a no, a no on a raise.
No, not this one.
And so, they gave that instead.
The reason they got the dollar in insurance is because they helped with the shopping of the insurance to a different provider, or a network provider, and say, the city a lot of money, so they bargained with them to say, hey, we helped you get this money, back then, of course, the claim for the cost of the plan was low, and instead of having a firefighter be sixty-five, you know, who had thirty-five years on, it was cheaper to let them guys go at twenty years because of the vacation and longevity it was for insurance, so that was how it all came about.
Well, I agree with that totally, and, and the, the sad part about it is, and I mean, I even hate to bring it up, because it's, it's terrible, I mean, things change. And, you know, you can't squeeze any more blood out of the, out of the city, it looks like, so you gotta squeeze it somewhere, and that's a terrible thing to say. And I'm not saying that that's what we should do, I'm saying you're doing a very, I mean, you're working on it. I mean, I remember the days when you wouldn't work on it, you know, now you're working, that's excellent, I just.
We have to.
Yeah, you're right, we do have to, and I mean, what else is there, I, I don't know what else there is. I mean, I just.
There's the little things we've done tonight, we cut our fees on the trash, we pay four percent that we've been paying out. We've done two or three little things tonight, we're not spending any money, you know, we're just doing the best we can. We brought seven hundred thousand in the general fund, we got all of April, let's see, we have one more pay claim in April and May.
Oh, we have to.
That's right, we all know.
But on a positive note, our claims are down, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and, well, because of, well, come on, maybe, I'm trying to get a little. And, and our, and because of the trash, trash truck, some of those workers' comp claims are down?
Yeah, we're down twelve thousand.
So, I mean, you know, so that's all positive, I mean, without doing anything.
Since we put the trash truck in, three employees have left the, the street department, that's, that's a whale of a saving, since three insurances we're not paying, that's three salaries we're not paying. One guy's picking it all up by himself, but we gotta pay for the truck, we won't realize the benefit until the end of five years when the truck's paid for. And then we hope to get five more years off the truck, so you divide that over ten years, really. We didn't get this way in six months or a year, it took, it's what, ten years to get here, it's going to take years to get back to where we need to be.
And I don't, and Mr. Mayor, I, you know, I, like Gary Weber brought up some horrible thing, but, but not to Weber's right, I mean, I, I don't see this, everything's going to be wonderful in June, and we're going to go back to same old, same old.
I never said that, I'm just hoping.
No, I didn't say you did, I'm just saying, well, I've read in the paper, you know, we've made a lot of mistakes in the past, do we have a plan for the future? Or are we just going to keep kicking this can around? You know, Fran brought up a very delicate subject, but it need to be brought up.
No, we're, we're not going to be just posy in, in June, I know that, I'm just hoping when we get to June, we could see, get to December, that's all I'm looking forward to. It's going to take some real creative management and financing to get through the whole mess until the assessed value. I've been looking at assessed values today, and there's some assessed values that have come up pretty nice, some businesses, we've got a new Hardee's, that's going to be a nice assessed value. New shopping centers, yeah, they got abatements, but they're partial abatements for a short time. Couple of apartment complexes, they've got some nice assessed values on them, the new Walmart store's got a nice assessment on it. There's some up and coming money, but it's like playing, playing Russian, we're like, we, we make a budget, it's just a piece of paper, what we estimate.
That's true.
The true figure is when you get that check from Debbie Kidd, that's the true figure.
I understand that.
Well, and those assessments have gone up, but on homes, they've gone down.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Which is great for citizens, you know?
Yeah, when you're paying taxes, that's cool.
But when are they going to reassess?
This year, it's a reassessment year.
So we won't see that as all the same.
It's a year and a half behind. But the trouble is, a lot of the assessments are going down, because it's all.
Assessments are going down, so is the tax, you know, a lot of W two, I mean, it's the, the home state credit score, it's the circle.
You, you've got your, your trending that the judge put into place, and if you've got a nice neighborhood where you have two hundred thousand dollar houses, and then you've got one that sells for seventy, that brings the average down, and it brings everything down, so when they go to assess that, and what happens if they don't assess it properly, they appeal it. I don't know how many appeals we had, I knew at one time, two, three hundred appeals, it took them a year and a half or so to get through the appeals. It's, it's a tough game, when, when our precious people in Indianapolis put this thing in, they thought the assessments would climb as the tax caps climb, they thought it was going to be just fine. And it works in Carmel, works great, works good in Fishers, it don't work good in Fayette County, don't work good in Union County or Wayne County, all through the South. I talk to mayors every day, what are we going to do, what are we going to do? Same thing we're doing, admit you're broke, borrowing money doesn't get it. We could have got out of never having this discussion if Julie and I just went and borrowed the money, made it through until tax time.
We could have paid back.
We may have to borrow some.
Well, I think we will before we're done, yeah.
Yes.
But as little as possible.
Yes, and.
Didn't bother the county, they went and borrowed six hundred thousand dollars, didn't bother them at all, I don't know, they gave everybody a raise next year. Discussion, any other more?
Is this the, are you doing the public forum yet?
Yeah, we're in the public forum.
We canceled that.
Yeah, we did.
Please.
I'm willing to get that, Ruby's not here, she called me. I gave a copy of this to Connie Rich.
I think she's probably decorating for Easter.
And I mentioned this before to Julie, and about the taxes, about the delinquent property taxes, that seems to be a big hit. And I have no clue if what Dale Strong put in the paper was accurate or not, where he stated that the county collects about eighty-nine percent, but that the city collects seventy-three to seventy-four percent of what we should collect.
He probably is pretty factual.
Pretty factual on that one. Well, the one thing that I've, and I've talked to Debbie Shaw-Kidd, and I spoke with you at the last meeting also about this, and the question comes up is, why do we not go for trying to get a garnishment of these people's wages who still have homes, who have delinquent property? I'm not talking about the ones that are vacant, that are set and empty, I'm talking about the ones that the people are living in and just choosing to not pay.
I don't, we can't do that.
It's illegal, you can't do that.
Well, no, I think it may be legal, but I think it has to be done with the county.
I agree, I agree.
The county must do it.
The county has to do it, but right here's the IC code that says that we can do it. So now my question is, why don't we try that? I understand that it takes the county to get a judgment against them, would you guys go to get a judgment against them also?
The county council?
You'd think they'd want to, wouldn't you?
I've talked with Dale Strong about this, and I gave him, I talked to him about it.
I didn't have any idea you could do that.
But it's not something that's just for.
I've been asking him, I've been trying to put people in jail for not paying their taxes, he says, we can do it.
And we put liens against it for the mowing and things like that, why don't we turn around, if they're making wages, why aren't we trying to collect that?
We can't do it, John.
I'm tired of paying for everybody else's services and now getting less services.
This statute doesn't authorize city liens, it, it talks about county taxes.
I know that, I'm asking if you guys can push the buttons to get that to occur.
Do they go after our portion of the taxes or just their portion?
Well, all, all the delinquent taxes. Will they garner it to collect all the delinquent? Well, that's an excellent idea. I don't know that they do.
City resident is a county resident.
The state law protect, or gives us that right, even if it is on the county level.
It is county, yeah.
It is county.
I mean, they would want, I mean, I mean, it's more money for them, it does, you know, just split it up when they get it.
City resident is a county resident, correct? Just on a county resident is a city resident.
Yeah, it's good for us, it's good for them, so.
I've asked that more than a year ago, and I just don't understand, I see people, it bothers me when there was a lot of people, when businesses were booming, and people decided to do rentals, and they bought two and three properties, and they just decided to let them slide back when they could no longer rent them, and some of those people are still driving around in nice cars, while I'm paying my taxes and I'm getting less services for it.
Have you taken this to the county council?
I have talked to Dale Strong about it, I actually didn't find it until afterward, I have not went to their meeting yet.
Yeah, I bet if you get on their agenda, that would be very helpful.
I have every intentions to, and I've just, Julie can give you guys a copy, I gave Connie one because she's my, she's my councilperson.
You may want to get, make sure the council, county council has a copy of this as well.
Well, even if you didn't get a lot of money right off the bat, it would have, it would be ammunition for people not, you better watch it, we have another way to get, you know, they don't want any money out of their wages.
Well, the problem with it is, what I see is, is we turn around and we do the sheriff sale, we do the tax sales, how do we find out who's delinquent? Why aren't we shaming those people, too? I'm sorry, and I don't mean to be mean, but.
They do list that in the paper.
It is listed in the paper when they.
And it's extensive.
Huge, you're right, I would never see it like that.
It's in, it's in the one, like the one ads, and it's all about this.
And I have no clue, I know a lot of people collect, or do pay it as soon as it comes out, you know, they'll see it, ooh, pay it.
It used to be a, a.
A shaming.
Mm-hmm, they brush in and pay back.
I don't think it's anymore.
My only point on it is, is we're so quick to tear them down, we're so quick to turn around and say they're vacant.
I'll say, it's been ten years.
Can we do this beforehand?
Ten years since I was county treasurer, and I look at those names, and some are the exact same names.
But that's a garnishment of wages, if they're making money, we'd be able to get it.
Thank you very much.
Debbie would have to be the one to tell you how many of those would.
Well, when I first went to Debbie about this, I didn't know there was an IC code on it, but I did ask her, and she told me the same thing that Julie did, if you were a city employee or a county employee, we'd do it in a heartbeat, but anybody else, we won't. State law allows you to do it to anybody.
True.
Because we actually have to furnish them with a list of our employees, and then they tell us, this, these are the ones that are delinquent, and then we send out letters to our employees that are delinquent, giving a certain amount of time to pay. Unfortunately, there's obviously a few.
I would probably agree with you on that, but there's some, but probably the most of them you'll find will be some bank owns them, that have walked away, or somebody in Arizona that just don't have anything to do with, or you can't find, or just don't have a job. There may be some that have a job, and I think what people do a lot of times, they'll take it right to the edge and then pay it. They'll take it right to the edge and then pay it, because the names I see on there, they aren't giving up their property.
Well, like I said, if Dale Strong is right, I, I don't know, he mentioned it in the paper that it was seventy-three, seventy-four percent was all that the city collected, and I thought, you know, that's pretty ridiculous with only, that means we've got almost twenty-five percent of the people that live right here within the city that aren't paying their share from the same services.
You're right, I think so, man.
And, and I'm the one that's getting a fire station closed in my neighborhood because we don't have enough firemen on a day. You know, I don't appreciate that, I pay my taxes, and I do own two pieces of property right over there in that area. I don't think I should have to be the person that's the bill for all of them.
We just don't have the money.
There is might be a way for you to get some of them.
Get some, yeah, but they have to do it.
I think, and I hope that by the pressure of the council and the pressure of you, Mayor, that maybe that would help.
Well, one good thing about it, the last meeting we had, I stood up and asked this, and right after Dale Strong brought it up on the council over there, so.
Mr. Baker's been telling, I've been asking him for years, what can we do? Can we put them in jail, can we do this, can we do that? He's always told me if he couldn't do anything, we'd file a lien, right, John?
That's right.
And that's all we can do.
A lien against the property, that, that's usually pretty effective, and most of them are paid. Most of them are paid by property owners, except if you have a, a bank, like you talked about, that's given up on a walkaway property, they really don't care, and it's.
Was it possible for us to get a list from the county of these people that are just in the city?
No, no, this statute applies to county treasurers.
I know, but can we get a list of properties in the city that actually have owners that live here?
Say that again, can we?
We need a list of these properties that have owners that are still here and have a job.
You mean the delinquents, are they delinquent?
Yeah.
They could probably, I don't know why they could.
That might be, it takes some work, but it's possible.
Well, I would think with the computer system that they have now, that that wouldn't be that hard to print.
Yeah, you mean for the county treasurer to pursue.
If he says seventy-five percent of our city houses, why, why can't we find out who they are?
Well, I, I suspect from what Julie's told me, that that would be found out by the treasurer and the auditor.
Well, we need to.
It's a matter of address.
Because it won't take long to go through those and find out whether it's a bank or an individual.
But keep in mind, this, this statute allows the county to pursue, which makes sense, they collect the taxes.
County to pursue, but we can push them.
Yes.
And it could take a while, because, just because it's still in an owner's name doesn't mean a bank's taking over us, we don't know.
You might go back through there and find yours, the lack of paying taxes, that you could go back on, and I'm sure, if you get five or ten percent of that, more money you have.
Well, I just think it's just another way for someone to look at and say, hey, if I don't do this, I'm going to make my wages garnish, and I don't think people want that, so.
Any further discussion?
Sometimes you're astounded by who's on the list.
Yeah, we will.
Another thing, too, is, I've got two houses across from, on my street, that they're, they're, people have just walked away from, and they're owned by the banks, and they don't get mowed. I mean, we, we eventually mow them, and there's not even a for sale sign in the front, they're not even trying to go on the market again.
I never could understand banks, when they get a piece of property, they just let it go to the pot. If someone, if I repossess this piece of property, I'd want to keep it nice, I'd want to keep it shiny so you could sell it, but banks, they take nice property, shut the heat off, let it freeze up, I don't, I don't understand it.
Mayor, some, some banks do, though, some banks do come around and take care of their properties, because being in the audit and forcing business anymore, I, I talk to a lot of banks that, that have had liens put on their properties or threatened to, because we send out the letters, and it goes to them, and they make sure they get people to come out and service it, winterize it, cut the grass or whatever, so there is a, a small percentage of the banks that do.
I'll tell you what I want you to do, chief, since you work for me, you're going to take over O'Neill's job this year, because we don't have the money to pay O'Neill. I want you to bring to me every property that you think has an owner that lives here. When you get a property, instead of just handing it over to whoever you hand it over to, Job or whatever, to cut the grass, I want you to bring that to me with the owner's name.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
I want to see for myself who those people are.
And knowing where employed might be helpful, knowing where they're employed might be helpful.
And I also want you to tell me that it's a local bank.
If you can pass it on to the city or county council.
I don't, I hardly ever see any local banks.
I know, I have talked to banks all over the United States, and you know what they say, don't call us, we've washed our hands, that's exactly what.
Mayor, I've, I've talked to them, and they haven't even seen the property, and I'll send them pictures to show them the condition of the property, and then you'll never hear from them again.
I'm like you, I don't like paying all my taxes either, and I pay a ton of taxes, believe me, and, and I, I put up with a lot over on A Street, and I pay a ton of taxes, between about twelve thousand dollars a year just on that one place. Tune about twelve thousand dollars a year just on that one place. And I don't like it. I think those people should be responsible for those buildings, those houses. And I've had to buy those houses in person to be able to tear them down to make the neighborhood look nice so I didn't have to sit and look at them. So I know what you feel, I know how you feel. But that's, I guess, the way it is when you live in the city. Any further discussion?
It's been a good discussion.
On anything?
On anything, bring it up.
Okay. Get my list.
The ballgame isn't till nine o'clock.
Okay. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, just to kind of, when you were talking about the retirees not getting a raise, were you speaking of PERF? Are you speaking of-
People on the thirty-seven fund.
And what does that mean for people who don't know?
Well, when they, when they retired, uh, there was two pension funds and Troy's really good on pensions too. Uh, well, in, there's a statute that funds police and fire and some guys retired under the thirty-seven act. You can look at on the IC website or whatever, or even go to PERF and they'll probably show you the information. Well, when they, there were some guys that converted to the seventy-seven fund. Well, then PERF took it over and Julie did it over. Those guys are handled by the state and they get a cost of living. Well, the guys that didn't convert, because they gave them a lump sum back then to convert. Some guys didn't wanna do it because back then you could retire when you had twenty years on it, didn't matter how old you were. You could come in at twenty-one and retire at forty-one and you'd still get your pension. Well, in the seventy-seven fund, you converted and got a lump sum of money, but you couldn't retire and draw till you were fifty-five years old. You could put twenty years in and retire, but you couldn't draw your pension till you're fifty-five. That's since been reduced down to fifty-two now, but when we say that, that's what we mean.
And with the penalty, right? Fifty-two?
Not now.
Fifty was seventy.
Fifty.
Fifty-two.
The guys that retired under the thirty-seven, they only get a raise if we get a-
The base pay for the active guys give them-
Seventy-seven, we get ours.
Well, this is-
That's the one move for the dollar entry.
But, but they have had raises.
Right. Well, you know, this is not, really, this is honestly not the time or the place to get into a negotiation. But, but honestly, but honestly, okay, the word pension, if you're talking to people thirty, thirty-five, they don't even know what that word means. Um, I mean, I hope that my son gets a job that even match on 401K or there even is a 401K. Um, I mean, like I said, it's not the time or the place, but-
To remember the firing police are not in social security.
And what does that mean? What do you mean by that?
You don't get social security. You don't enjoy the rest of your life.
That's interesting, that's first, that's good knowledge, I didn't know that.
Only social security you can get is jobs that we all had prior to being police or firemen and, and we'll take a penalty on that because we have-
Yeah, we don't get the claim.
Cause we have a defined benefit for it.
Gotcha.
Which is our pension.
I didn't know that he can do it.
So there again.
See, I was thinking, social security, the whole time you guys were talking earlier, you don't get it, okay.
And when you ask why they, they got a dollar, put all that into play. That's why there's these, the guys that retired at that, under the thirty-seven act, they're not, their pension was really not that much. So you're asking them to pay more?
Are they getting the same amount they got back then, they getting now?
Maybe a little bit of raises.
They've had a few raises since, I mean, like what, two or three years ago, two years ago, like three percent salary increase.
They had two raises.
I think they only have not one.
Well, we raised you twice, didn't we?
No, only one.
On our basis one. On our basis, man, that's what, that's normal.
We gave extra benefits, we gave another personal benefit.
They don't get that, it has to be on our basis.
That's why we, in that last contract, we raised this actual salary three percent for police and fire.
You gotta take care of our retirees.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I don't, I think maybe talks could start at, I don't, maybe, why would they, all retirees, you know, maybe should be the same at five percent? I don't know.
Well, if you, just like you said, I, I mean, if they retire at age forty, don't you think someone got other jobs that, I don't think they're not, not working.
Well, yeah.
I mean, so, it's not doomsday, I mean, it's not like they're, they're sitting and that's all their money they're getting, I mean, I'm sure they have other jobs, not, not all of them.
Most of them are in their sixties now.
Now, yeah.
Yeah, they're probably something, I know a lot of them's past sixty-five now and everything.
Well, they're past sixty-five, they're not on the insurance.
They're trying to wee out.
And then it's a single plan anyway, right?
Yes.
And then it's a big reduction.
So are we looking at all city employee insurances? Looking at all of them?
Or only the one we get?
Yeah.
For retirees, John?
For police and fire.
They're the only ones that get it, right.
We're talking about police and fire.
Well, that was my next thing. I, I would, I love Troy's idea about a committee for, for health insurance because, I mean, there's, you know, you've got the Fayette who, you know, dropped, you know, there's several, and I mean, Fayette, I'm using them as an example because they're a huge employer. They, um, they don't, if your spouse can get insurance for X amount of dollars or less or if they have to spend more than X amount of dollars to get insurance, they won't cover them. Uh, I think they're told that they won't do the kids, you know, I, there's so many different things that, you know, are out there. I mean, you know, and we haven't done any of that. I mean, you hate to say it, but it is a business. I mean, it's not-
I'll tell you what, we're supposed to meet with the mayor Thursday, Thursday evening at six o'clock and I would encourage the council members with the most questions to show up because we're gonna meet with him in three, so.
There's only one problem, I can only have three council people.
Yeah. So the ones with the most questions.
Thursday at three?
Three of you.
Thursday at six.
Oh, at six, okay, I'm sorry.
Thursday night at six o'clock.
You can't have everybody.
Where?
The conference.
Okay, 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 well, I can hide.
We can meet with another, we can meet with another three another time, you know, to discuss.
Wait, wait, wait a minute. You know, we're supposed to conduct business in a public meeting. We can't do the sweetheart deals, whatever that may be. We have to be very careful.
Well, we're gonna discuss-
We gotta be very careful what you discuss.
We're gonna discuss contractual stuff.
We have, you have an executive session, do you?
I'm only meeting with three, the fireman and their attorney and Mr. Baker and myself.
So it's not an executive session, then?
Well, you gotta watch out for serial meetings.
Right.
That's my point.
They ask for a meeting of their union people and the mayor and three council people, that's legal.
That, if there's only one, but you can't bring another three council people.
No, I'm not going to, I told them when we-
No, I'll end at a different time, if there was any questions.
We have three council peoples, all I can have.
Right. Well, he can meet with three council people when he's on the one though, if you want.
Julie, I would like for you, if you could, sometime, I don't care when, tomorrow. Just, are these fourteen, can you tell me their ages? Just sometime, because I mean, we're just speculating now, it'd be nice to know where they are.
Sure.
You know, I mean, that way we can tell how many are gonna fall off and maybe we don't have to do anything.
A lot of those, several of them on the single plan are probably spouses and they'll be actually retiring, so.
Mr. Baker, did you say they could meet with the mayor and yourself and one council person or three?
Well, less than a quorum, but you can't have serial meetings, you can't do that over and over and over with different councils.
That's what I was getting at.
So that's the Bobby Knight IU.
Well, the last meeting we had, there wasn't any council.